Have a seat, we're gonna call the meeting to order, please call the roll.
Seager, Arsamoat.
Here.
Robert.
Here.
Truckcello, Dartrey.
Here.
Milligan.
Here.
Gaines.
Here.
Martino.
Here.
Narcisse.
Here.
Trancoso, Walker.
Here.
And Barrios.
Here.
We have a call, would you like to appoint these?
Yes, please appoint the alternates.
Mr. Barrios.
Mr. Barrios. Announcements, please silence all phones and electronic devices. If your, when your case is heard, if it doesn't go the way you wish, you have the right to appeal to the parish council. Anytime, anyone who wishes to speak on any particular item, we ask that you fill out a speaker card. Public speaking will be five minutes each side as, at the discretion of the chairman, and three minutes for additional comments. Once your case is heard, you can exit the building at, just please do so quietly. Would you please rise for the invocation? And silence your phone, please.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group and nature the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace, Lord God, as we make decisions that might affect the citizens and businesses of St. Tammany Parish. And continue to remind us that all we do here today and all we accomplish is for the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory of you, and for the service of humanity. We ask these things in your name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, ungod, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a, you guys all have a copy of the minutes from the previous meeting, I need a motion to approve the minutes.
I move.
Okay, so moved by Commissioner Narcisse, do I have a second?
Yes, second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Please vote.
Motion to approve them, approved.
Okay, staff, do we have some postponements?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have a request to postpone for one month, item number two, 2025-4261 CP, commercial excavation. And Mr. Paul Marone is here, if we, if the commission has any questions.
Mr. Marone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we're still working on some of the site plan submittals with the new UDC. We're working with staff to try to figure out exactly what they need to be able to get that to them, so we need a little bit more time to be able to work through that process before we have the information to them that they can present to you that we can come back and ask for a decision. So, we think until next month would be more than sufficient.
Okay, one month?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair, before we go, I gotta read the minutes to the record.
Yes, go ahead, read it into the record, wait, we need a motion first, or go ahead, no, actually, go ahead.
All right, so 2025-4261 CP use, commercial excavation. Existing zoning, R1 rural residential district and R0 rural overlay. Location parcel located on the west side of LA 3241 and on the south side of Kenan Road, Bush, Ward 6, District 6, 71.17 acres. Jordan Parnell is the petitioner, owner is Mossy Hill Plantation LLC, Council District 6.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak for or against this item? Any reason why it should not be postponed? Okay, I'll bring it back to the commission, I need a motion to postpone.
Got it.
Go ahead, Renee.
I move to postpone for 30 days.
Okay, for one month?
One month.
Okay, a motion to postpone for one month, Commissioner Daughtry.
Yes, I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Motion and a second to postpone for one month, please vote.
Motion to approve, Carries.
Any other cases, Helen?
No other requests, no.
Okay, we'll move on to agenda, item number one on tonight's agenda.
Item number one, 2025-4241 ZC, existing zoning, ML Low multifamily residential district and Highway Commercial 2 district. Proposed zoning S2 suburban residential district. Location parcel located on the west side of Highway 25, on the north side of Bennett Bridge Road. Folsom Ward 3, District 3, 20.81 acres, petitioner Paul Marone. Owner, Lakes Hill Subdivision LLC, Jared J. Caruso, Ricky Smith, Ricky LLC, and R4 Holdings LLC, Council District 3.
Staff?
The applicant is requesting to rezone a 20.81 acre tract of land from ML Low multifamily residential district and HC2 Highway Commercial District to S2 suburban residential district. The maximum net density allowable within the ML district is one unit per 4,000 square feet of property. Roughly 16.85 acres of the subject property is zoned ML multifamily residential district. As currently zoned, the owner of the property could develop a gross total of 183 units of multifamily residential dwellings by right. The requested S2 district minimum lot size requirements are 7,500 square feet and 75-foot lot widths. If the request to rezone the property to S2 is approved, the applicant could apply for a concept subdivision plan review with an allowable gross density of 120 lots. Per the St. Tammany Parish multimodal transportation plan, the segment of Highway 25 typically experiences light congestion. However, congestion increases when traffic approaches the US 190 interchange in Covington. There appears to be community sewer and water infrastructure in the immediate area.
Thank you. So, before you get started, Mr. Marone, we do have a number of petitioners who wish to speak, you know, for or against this topic. So, to make it fair, I'm gonna increase the time for both sides to eight minutes. So, just keep in mind, everyone who wishes to speak on this topic, you have eight shared minutes. This is just so that we could keep this moving along, this has already been a topic we've seen, heard at a previous meeting. We've had a community meeting, so everybody should have their thoughts in order. So, Mr. Marone, you have eight minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Paul Marone, on behalf of the petitioner and the developer. As you know, and as the chairman just mentioned, you've heard this case once before, last month, and the case has also been subject to a community meeting. So, there's been an opportunity to go pretty thoroughly over the facts, but I'll just try to touch on them again and reiterate the points that I think are important as we ask you to make a decision this evening. This 20.86 acres, as you know, is located at the intersection of Bennett Bridge Road and Highway 25. Importantly, as Ms. Cook noted in her staff report, 16.85 acres of the site is currently zoned for multifamily use. So, by right, apartments can be constructed on that 16.85 acres. What's also important in your consideration is the remainder of the property. That's four acres. That four acres along Highway 25 is zoned HC2 Highway Commercial District, a very intense, as you know, highway commercial zone. That four acres or so is also broken up into nine existing lots. So, we have nine HC2 lots that front along Highway 25 as we stand here tonight. Our proposal is to rezone all of that, not just the 16 acres where the multifamily is permitted, but also the additional four acres where the highway commercial is permitted. And as you know, and as Ms. Lambert pointed out, I think in some of her research and the staff report, this property has been zoned in this manner, the multifamily and the HC2 or highway commercial C2, back many years ago, for a long time. It is rare that you have petitioners that come before you requesting a true downzone, but that is exactly what we're asking. We're not asking to increase the intensity on either of these tracks, the 16 acres or the four acres. We're asking to take the multifamily and the highway commercial and downzone them entirely to S2, which is a single-family zone, as Ms. Cook just noted. That downzone is significant, is very significant, in my view. All of the concerns that we hear, not just tonight, but, you know, every first Tuesday that we, that we talk about, are lessened by this downzone. Now, we know that there are legitimate concerns all over St. Tammany Parish about traffic, and, and that is true. But I will tell you, S2 generates a fraction of the traffic that ML and HC2 will generate on this property. A fraction of it, there's just no way around that. And, and I don't mean to be flippant or suggest, but if there are concerns about traffic, taking it from a multifamily zone that is permitted for 180 units and downzoning it where the maximum you could have would be 73, and that includes the four acres of commercial, the traffic generated is a fraction of that. Drainage is also always a concern. Now, this property is different than most in that there are no wetlands, it is all in flood zone C. But still, traffic and drainage is a concern. I know that some of the residents in the community meeting and in subsequent conversations have concerns about drainage in their area, and legitimate concerns. The drainage is less impactful if this is developed as a single-family residential subdivision, as opposed to 16 acres of multifamily and nine separate lots of highway commercial. It is far less impactful. So, legitimate concerns, all of them. But with the request, those concerns are impacted far less than they would be if we simply came in and pulled a permit and went to work out there. So, I urge you to please consider that. As I said, it is very rare that you have a petitioner that would come to you and truly request a straight downzone. And going from multifamily and HC2 to single-family S2 is a downzone in any estimation. We know that there are also concerns about sewer and water in the area. This site happens to have central sewer and water. It is operated by Tammany Utilities, it is their system. We understand that there is capacity in that system, both water and sewer. That will have to be ferreted out and verified. If there are improvements or upgrades that need to be made to meet all of DEQ's requirements and the parish's requirements, then we know that would be incumbent upon the developer before the tie-in can be made. But it, you will have central utilities in this location, which is rarity in the, in the northern part of the parish, but that opportunity does exist here. At the end of the day, this property has been zoned, highway commercial, and for multifamily use for a very long time. It could have been developed at any of that time. The owner now wants and needs to bring it into commerce. We want and would like to be able to bring it into commerce at single-family residential and S2, as opposed to apartments, and as opposed to highway commercial lots fronting Highway 25. I understand there is always friction with change. I understand the residents don't want the apartments, they don't want the, the single-family 73 lots, I recognize that. I urge you, though, to make a decision that results in the least impacts, and the least impacts this evening is granting the S2 zoning. Thank you very much for your consideration, I'll be happy to answer any questions at the appropriate time.
Thank you. Does anyone else in the audience wish to speak in favor? Okay, against, we have Mr. Bryant Laird. Remember, everyone, we have eight combined minutes, so please give your neighbors a little opportunity to speak as well.
Yes, sir, Bryant Laird, thank you all again for allowing us to do this. I didn't mention this last time, but over my shoulder, I'm in the shadows of my grandfather, who was a police juror in the 1950s and 60s, his picture is there furthest to the right. He was very instrumental in getting the causeway built. With today's subject, I would like to have a chance to talk to him about that. I need, I have a question for the board. In 2009, the comprehensive rezoning, who missed this? Who's responsible for missing this 16 years ago? Question for the board.
We can't, we can't answer that, so, well, if somebody wants to ask staff, they can do so.
Okay.
But your, your question's noted.
Yeah, I think that should be noted from the fact that we're, we're now in this situation, and hopefully there's some safeguards that will protect us from that in the future. Can I ask who Tammany Utilities is owned by?
We'll consider that question as well.
Can anybody give me that answer?
No, no, sir, you can't, you can't, you can't ask the audience.
So, it's, my concerns is the water and the sewage, and I thought we could ask questions, not directly to Mr. Marone, but I thought we could with you guys. But I do have concerns with the water and the sewage and what it's gonna cost if it is a independent.
I wanna, I wanna address what you just said, and you can ask us questions, but if, if, if any of us know, we're, we will, we will answer you, but if we don't know, then we can reserve that question and maybe ask staff to try to find that answer for you. I don't know some of these things off the top of my head, so they're far.
So, does anybody know who Tammany Utilities is owned by?
We'll, we'll give the commissioners an opportunity to speak after, after this is over.
Okay. So, once again, concerned, so I urge you to look into that and see if that's gonna cost us as taxpayers money to get that fixed, available, you know, it's good business sense, what is it gonna take to get that up to code? And we've heard from an engineer who's hired independently, but we haven't heard from any of our engineers with the police juror, with the council, or, or with our parish to understand that. So, I would like to know, you know, what is it gonna cost us as taxpayers to get this to where it can handle that type of density in this area before we move forward? So, I urge you to postpone this, that we have more information about it, thank you very much.
Thank you. Bruce Nesbit?
So, this is my lament. It does look like you all are gonna approve this tonight, and that the parish council will do the same. And it all really started back in the 80s where the gentleman just asked, who made this? Who overlooked this? Well, I was around, and, and I know some people that were also around, and, and we all, when it was rezoned, the comprehensive rezoning, we knew that it was zoned for multifamily because it had been, because of the apartments that had been built, the townhouses. And for some reason, it seemed like the logical thing to do to allow the, the full parcel to be zoned like, like the front of it was. And it wasn't really missed, but we just didn't think, we didn't assume that it would be so horrible that we would be paving the parish at this time. So, yeah, we missed it, but we thought about it, and we did it with our eyes open, we did it. So, if this is what we want, you know, we look back now, we say, how did we miss this? How did we do this? Well, in 25 years, there're gonna be another board of people up here and a whole nother room of people back here, and they're gonna be saying about us, how did they do this? Well, sometimes you just step in it and you do it anyway, and I don't, it's a shame, it's a crying shame that this is happening. We are paving over our parish, our lovely, lovely parish. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Kim Corr?
See, I want me to start with the law or just some facts?
You said you had.
Don't, don't start that yet, okay?
You said you had something to hand out, so why don't we start with that?
Yeah, I'm gonna give it to you in a minute and everything, but I got some St. Tammany Parish codes and ordinances, but I got something I wanna read to y'all real quick. And for Mr. Ricky, I think we should build the duplexes because he's got 12 and they not even full, so let's put 175 more and they'll fall down, you know, but the 12 that's there aren't full, but that's just a thought of mine. Okay, in a report from WWLTV, the Louisiana Department of Environmental Quality confirmed that St. Tammany Parish was not to code. Tammany Utilities, which was owned by the Rickys, poor performance predated the sale of the Sewage and Water Company to the parish. Okay, here's the problem. In December 2005, Sella, which is the water place, pled guilty to felony violation of the Federal Clean Water Act and agreed to pay $2.1 million fine for improperly operating sewer systems throughout southwestern St. Tammany Parish, polluting local waterways over an 11-year period. The great idea was our parish would buy it from them. Okay, on March 29th, 2006, Sella was sentenced to federal district court pursuant to the plea agreement to five years probation, fined 2.1 million for violating the Federal Clean Water Act. The fine was reported to be the largest single corporate environmental criminal fine ever in Louisiana history. Well, here's the deal, before the parish purchase, our appraiser, RW Becker, whoever, recommended that St. Tammany Parish have a detailed environmental investigative perform. Now, did we do that? I don't know. To identify potential future liabilities, once the parish takes ownership of Sella, it will own the environmental problems, which there's them green lily trees growing and all the poop ditches around there, and the regulators will no longer hold Sella accountable. So, that's our parish problem, and as a taxpayer, that's a problem for me. It is recommended that an escrow fund is created for all the proceeds if we get in future potential non-compliance costs that may arise resulting from violations that occurred under the existing ownership deal. Question for me, for y'all is, do we have it in escrow? Are we ready when the poop hits the ditches and the water run across the road? Last week, onto our property at the end of Highway 25, the end of Bennett Bridge and Highway 25, there was trees and stuff that floated by onto our land that's on the other side. My cousin Kent, he's got a retention pond that he didn't want in front of his house. But anyway, if I still got time, if anybody else wants to talk, I've got some St. Tammany Parish Code of Ordnances from Article 3, Inspection of Sewage and Water Systems. I don't know, does some of y'all wanna talk, or y'all wanna hear some laws or anything? Sir?
Go ahead.
Okay. The sewage system furnished to the DEQ, sir?
Please, if you would allow me to run the meeting, I would appreciate it, so, it's okay, look.
Okay, ask them if they wanna talk, I was taking a lot of time.
You, you are, but just like, please address us and not, and not the audience, okay? I appreciate that, thank you. Go ahead.
Oh, I can go now?
Yes, ma'am.
I get wound up, man, I'm sorry.
You do.
Okay. This is a, don't start the clock till he got me stopped. The St. Tammany Parish Code of Ordnance, Article 3, Inspection of Sewage and Water Systems. Section 4072, section 4074, Report of a Deficient Condition, section 4037, blah, blah, blah. Okay, we're gonna get down here to 4038. Monitoring of Government Sewer Systems Furnished to DEQ Reported on a Discharge Monitoring Report, DMR, Form EPA, Sample Measurements Kept for Three Months. Do we got them? I don't know. Okay, section 4039, Monitoring of Government Water Systems, Every System Should Make Available All Monitoring Data. Does our parish have that? Section 4040, Other Means of Compliance, The Parish President Is Hereby Authorized and Directed, blah, blah, blah. Okay, then we go back to, the Department of Planning and Development is responsible for the guiding, the orderly growth and development of St. Tammany Parish. You go back to K, Community Sewage Systems, Design and Construction of the Operation of the Facility, Regulatory Approvals and Authorization Have Been Issued by Appropriate and Applicable State and Parish Regulatory Agencies. The Owner/Operator of Wastewater Treatment Facilities Possess a Valid Franchise Agreement. I'm gonna stop because our system's about 60 years old, it was never registered with the state until the year 2001, if I'm correct. It is in decay right now, but it's a real old system. Somebody's got nine seconds, bye.
Thank you. So, if you guys don't mind, I've got four additional cards, we can hold you into the rebuttal period, and you still have an opportunity to speak. Okay, so, yeah, unless somebody wants to come up and take nine seconds. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Marone, we'll go to the rebuttal time as, now. Just, just briefly, the Rickys have not been in the water and sewer business since
2010. Tammany Utilities is owned and operated by St. Tammany Parish, it is a public utility, it's not a private utility, and it has been that way since 2010. So, I understand the concern about the sewer and water, but again, that is, that is not a system that my client owns or operates. Obviously, if at the time we wanna connect to it, improvements need to be made, or capacities need to be increased in any way, then that would be the responsibility of us as the developer, as any developer would have to do in any of the parish systems across the parish. But from what we have been told by Tammany Utilities, there is capacity, both sewer and water, at that system now. And it is being operated by Tammany Utilities, by St. Tammany Parish as a public utility. I would simply go back to what I said a moment ago, and if we look at this case through the sewer and water lens, through the traffic lens, through the drainage lens, through changing what's going on in the area, any of those lenses that we might look at this request, in my view, it's impossible to see it any other way than single-family residential is better than the current zoning that's out there. And I urge you to look at that. I mean, most of the battles that happen in here are a request to increase the intensity of the zoning. We want more density, but tonight we're asking for less. We want more intensity, but tonight we're taking highway commercial and we're downzoning it to S2. It's inverted from what we usually do, and I urge you not to lose sight of that. This is a unique case, and we have an opportunity to do something here that I think will be better all around for everybody. My client would prefer to develop this as single-family residential. At the end of the day, we believe that single-family residential will be a better fit in that area. And we urge you to give us the opportunity to do that. This is not a situation where saying no means that there will be no project. There's going to be a project, we have an opportunity to do one that is less impactful than what our current zoning allows, and we ask you to let us do that, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, before I get into any additional rebuttal by somebody who's already spoken, I'm gonna call on the remaining people, Ms. Barbara Harris. Thank you for being patient.
Thank you, I did speak at the last zoning meeting, I appreciate you guys being here. I understand that you guys are volunteers, I didn't know, I thought you all were elected officials. When we had our community meeting, that was an eye-opening experience because we are directly south of this development on the other side of 1078. So, the runoff from this property is of dire need for us because it goes directly into our pond, down our property ditch, into a non-functioning parish-managed ditch, which our councilwoman stood at the community meeting and admitted that they did not have right of access. So, what happens? The water backflows onto our property. So, if we have a treatment plant that is not really up to par, and we may have viruses floating through our pond, whichever, that, you know, and I understand that, Mr. Marone, they're expecting, they're, they're requesting a smaller development, being S1, 73 homes. The people back here, we're not opposed to him developing his property, we're asking you guys to make a responsible choice. If you're gonna zone it, single-family residential, then let's not put 73 homes on 20 acres because that is not the correct answer. In an area where we have to have five-acre parcels or 300-foot of high-rate frontage in order to build our single-family homes. You guys have a re, an ability to make a concerted effort to preserve what we don't, what we wanted to continue to have. And in St. Tammany fashion, you know, we, we build subdivisions and then we build the infrastructure after. We don't have pumps to help pump storage to someplace else, it's gonna come right into my property. And I don't know about you, but I don't want excess viruses and whatever floating through my property because the parish isn't doing their job with taking care of parish-run ditches and whatever. So, I personally would request another stay on the decision for tonight until another month, until people can get their, their thoughts together and do some research on everything that needs to be done, you guys included. Thank you.
Thank you. Timmy Singleton?
Thank you. I wanted to speak on two items, one, the first one being a water well. I'm a licensed well driller, I've had the pleasure to serve a lot of these people in the community, drilled a lot of them's water wells, I know a lot about it. Also wanna comment on a, one other topic, but with regard to the well, that well's 45 years old, it's near. It's near the end of its lifespan. This well was never, it was not registered when it was constructed, rather post-registered in 2000, let's see, in 2001, it was post-registered and the, basically the registration form is blank. All we know is the depth, the screen diameter, the size of pump that was installed 45 years ago. So, they're going to need another water well. There's no ifs, ands, and buts on that. Incidentally, if that current well were to be, let's say you unearthed it on your property and to try to use it for commercial or domestic use or certainly public supply, the state would never allow that well to be used. There's no information on the grouting depth or any of the details that are required to codify a legal well. And then the other comment, in your own standards for review, that's this committee's standards for review. It says, and I'm quoting, "When reviewing a zoning map amendment, the St. Tammany Parish Planning and Zoning Commission shall," I believe that's the strongest language possible, "it shall take the following items into consideration." One, the one that catches my eye is the last one. It's item six. "The proposed amendment enhances or protects the surrounding natural environment, including air, water, stormwater management, wildlife, and vegetation." It doesn't do that. It fails on every single, all six items. It fails on. And item number three, "The proposed amendment corrects an error or meets the challenge of some change in condition, trend, or fact." You guys own this. Not you personally, perhaps, but this is an egregious error that was made years ago. And whether it was made with your eyes open or your eyes closed, you made it. And like Ms. Harris said, we're restricted to one, one home on five acres. And that's what this property should be. So, in closing, thank you for letting me speak. And then fix the problem. You have the opportunity to do it, but do you have the will?
Thank you. We only have a couple of seconds yet. Keith and Drew? I can't, I can't read the Gen, uh, Genevieve? Keith and Drew, Genevieve?
Uh, I'm Keith.
Just give him a minute.
I just say, uh-
Come up to the mic first, sir. Yep. I give you another minute, okay?
Thank you, sir. A bad decision was made 40 years ago, and now they want to make another bad decision tonight. So, I say, we're not going to be part of the bad decision. We're going to leave it like it is and let the cards play as well. And as far as the commercial, we need commercial. If they build houses there or apartments there, the $1 store is not going to handle us. So, we need some more commercial there. We lost our hardware stores in Folsom. We could use a hardware store. So, there's no need to take away highway frontage commercial, which a lot of commercial is on highway frontage. And as far as that sewer plant, I don't know if any of y'all have looked at it, but it's in disrepair. It's pitiful. The grates cross the top, half of them are off. About, when this all started a month or six weeks ago, for two days, there was four or five St. Tammany trucks out there doing something. What they were doing, I don't know. Somebody knows what they were doing, but they wasn't cutting grass. And there's 100 pounds of chlorine sitting on top of sewer plants. So evidently, they was trying to clean up what's coming out the sewer. Because when you cross the road, they got the big elephant plants. They're 1.5 foot tall, and they say that grows where the sewer comes out. So, there's definitely a problem. Plus, there's a safety problem.
We're out of time.
Have a nice night.
I appreciate it, man. Thank you. That is the, all of the time has been allocated for speakers. Paul, do you want the extra minute? Okay. Bring it back to the, I'm going to take a little bit of time here just to address some of the questions. So, one of the questions was, who owns the Tammany Utilities? I think that was addressed during the rebuttal period. That's owned by St. Tammany Parish. I would like to ask, staff was, prior to this, when's the last time that was inspected? The last time the sewer and the well was inspected? So, if the, if the parish owns this, they, they're responsible for maintenance?
Yes. This is a question that would have to be asked to the director of Tammany Utilities.
And who is that? If the parish own, my, I'm a little confused.
Is Mr. Christopher Tissue?
Is he, is he a St. Tammany Parish employee?
He's the director of the department.
Okay. So, is that, all right. So, that would be, is he going to attend the next meeting or the planning meeting?
He does not normally attend the planning meeting.
So, if a new water well, since this, utilities have been directed or given over to the parish and a new water well is required, who is going to drill that well? The Tammany, St. Tammany?
I think that this is really questions that needs to, really need to be answered by Mr. Tissue. He's the director.
Okay.
If you want to give me a list of those questions, I'd be happy to have him, you know, provide more information for the next meeting or the planning meeting.
Okay. So, several of you guys have brought up some very good questions, and I want to make sure that they are addressed. However, there's two different meetings that we have to adjudicate the disposition of this property. We have a zoning meeting, that's this meeting right here, where we address only the zoning part, whether the zoning is appropriate for this property or not. I just want to make sure everybody understands that. A lot of the issues as regards to runoff, drainage, sewer and water, that's all in the planning meeting. And they have to come to us with a tentative plan before any of that can even be addressed. I guarantee you that the parish is going to put some, definitely some tight restrictions on how that plan is developed. And their engineering team for the developer is going to have to meet those requirements. So, we have two different things, and I don't want to put the cart before the horse. Tonight, we're only addressing the zoning, whether that zoning is appropriate for this. Now, you know, it's going to be up to my other, my fellow commissioners to ask whatever questions they have to make that determination. But I wanted to make sure that we're delineating between the two problems that you have before us tonight. Y'all have asked some great questions, and I want to make sure they're considered in the proper time. With that, I'll bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Martino?
Yes. I was able to make that community meeting, observing primarily. I agree that there's concern with the density. We all understand the density as is would be greater. I want to address the primary concern or what you're bringing to the commission, your frustrations, is are we allowing this? Our, our job is to vote yes or no. We do not have the ability, and it's not appropriate, to request alternate proposals by a developer or a landowner. Like it or not, we don't, we do not have that ability. The council does not have that ability. We can make suggestions. We can bring these to fruition in the community meetings. So, I say all of that because I personally agree that S2 on 7,500 square-foot lots is not appropriate for this, in my opinion, for this location. I, I live not far south, but I travel to and from Folsom multiple times a week. So, not, not addressing traffic, that's not anything I'm an expert in. Just visually, what you're driving past and what you see, I, I don't think that that is something I can picture in that location. Nor is duplexes. So, we are in a position that's very difficult. By saying no to a request as it, as it is in front of us is, is, is keeping this zoning as is. And again, going in the affirmative would be agreeing. So, just so you know where those two options are in front of us as it stands. Those are only my comments. I'm not making a motion at this moment.
Okay. Commissioner Robert?
I just had a few things I wanted to address. So, I took notes. I'm going to go down my list. I was not available for the community meeting. I would have loved nothing more to have been there. It's one of the few that I've missed. Ms. Nesbit, you made a comment. We didn't think at the time that we needed to worry about it. Thinking back to everyone's questions, Mr. Laird, your comment on who missed it in 2009. I don't think anybody in this parish expected what happened in 2006. And that is the mass exodus of families from the South Shore and surrounding areas to St. Tammany Parish for the event that just hit us. We had the 20th anniversary of on Friday. The population growth in this parish absolutely exploded due to available homes, subdivisions that were already approved by the council and this commission in 2004. We had homes that were built, subdivisions ready to go. I don't think anybody expected what happened. Additionally, in 2009, it is my understanding, I have in-laws who live on 22 in Madisonville. Their property was rezoned from residential to highway commercial. I had to fight that before I came on this commission. I totally understand. I agree. And as Commissioner Martino said, we agree S2 is not the best use for this, but we also don't want to see duplexes go up. I don't think anybody, I think everybody here has said we all are in agreement. Ms. Core, the information that you were requesting regarding some of the utilities, I do think that that's available on DEQ's website, Louisiana Department of Environmental Quality. It's called the EDMS reports. You can pull all of that up. It's free, public information. I'm looking at it right now. If you look for EDMS and you just search Tammany Utilities, it pulls up 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, all the way back to 18, 1985. My goodness, not 1895. So, that's where you can find that information. There's like an 11-page report on there, emails back and forth with the parish. So, I do encourage you to go find those reports and dive into them. Mr. Singleton? I've spoken to you several times in the past. I do have a question for you regarding the well. The well that you were referring to that's 45 years old, is that the well that feeds the Tammany Utilities in that area? Or is this a separate private well on that property for that duplex that you're talking about?
Stop. Please come at the, if she's asking a question, please come to the mic, sir.
Mr. Singleton has drilled many wells for families on now, so I trust Mr. Singleton.
That well is 850 feet deep. It's a municipal public supply well. There are actually two wells on the property. There's a 4-inch well, also a municipal supply well.
Okay.
But there's no information on that one.
That's the one that you said the registration information was blank on the driller's log?
No, that was the, the one that's being used by Tammany Utilities.
Okay.
If you go to the state LDNR and pull the records.
Yeah. I use it all the time.
I can show you if you'd like afterward. I have a photo of the registration on my phone.
I use it all the time. I use it almost every day to see how deep people's wells need to go on their property. So, I am familiar. I know that a lot of those from the early 2000s, the registration information was blank because they retroactively uploaded it before we had the internet. So, I was just curious. So, thank you very much. That's all for me. Thank you.
Commissioner Narcisse?
The proverbial rock and hard, a hard place. Like, I think everybody is very clear. We've heard it three, four times back and forth as far as, we don't want this, but we don't want this. I want to be very clear that this is not duplexes. It is apartments. It's a lot bigger. I think the density is horrible. I think that's why we had the community meeting in the first place because we realized just how monumental this decision was. And it's not easy. Usually, we have a motion and a motion and a motion, and it moves. None of my fellow commissioners made a motion. That's how big this is because we want to hear all the input. I went to the community meeting. I wanted a compromise. I'm still keeping hope alive. I want to ask a question real quick. I'm hearing a lot of-
Who are you directing it to?
Uh, first, the-
Yeah, direct to a single person.
Okay. Well, let's go with Mr. Laird because he's going to be the most vocal. Gotcha. And I don't know if you speak for everybody, but I'll get a show of hands or something. We'll figure it out. I love it. If hypothetically, and then I'll go to Mr. Morone afterwards if we get there, I'm hearing, let them keep the, let them keep the apartments. Let them do this, let them do that. I'm hearing different ways. The four acres in the front that's commercial, that will lessen the number of houses and give some commercial viability there. Would that be a happy compromise, potentially, for everybody involved?
I think we're at the place where any compromise would be greatly appreciated. So, yes, to answer that at this time, I think it would. That's just one man's opinion.
I don't know how much it would take off. I honestly wouldn't know. Okay.
It would reduce it obviously some. So, it, as a gentleman spoke earlier, Keith, I thought, I think, talked about the commercial property needed. You know, as you grow, you do need that stuff. But, yeah, we're, we're looking for, for any type of compromise that we can get, in my opinion.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner, oh, you got it?
I asked Mr. Morone if that was a-
Go ahead.
Mr. Morone? Once again, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to dangle hope or anything like that. I just want to be very open. Because I did hear that, that rebuttal, like, hey, we'll take the commercial up front. The apartments is a scary thing. Let's, I'm still working on a solution. commercial up front, the apartments is a scary thing, I'm still working on a solution. If it does not exist, if your clients don't want it, I understand it, and we'll have to make a decision on that, so I just want to-
Well, I appreciate your continual efforts to try to find a compromise. I know it's something you do a lot, and I appreciate you doing that. I do not have the authority this evening to say that we would take the four acres out of the request, so I can't commit to that, I can't say that we will do that. I would also say, though, that I'm not sure that it would have a very meaningful impact, because at least in our initial layout, a good bit of the commercial, we were leaving as green space along the highway, and then we were also taking a large part around the old winter circle, and we were going to make that into, you know, a community facility for the residents. So I'm not sure that there were a whole lot of houses that were on that area, even if we were to exclude that from the request, but I simply don't-
Is the building there going to be torn down?
The building would be renovated to serve as a community center for the subdivision.
Okay.
So I'm sorry, I just don't have the ability to commit to agree to anything like that this evening.
Could you get that in 30 days? Just an answer?
I would urge you not to delay, there's really no reason to delay this any further, I don't believe. As you know, whatever happens is likely to go to the council, but certainly I respect whatever is the will of the commission. But we would ask that a decision be made this evening if possible.
I'll take that into consideration.
Commissioner Arsaman.
Yeah, my question was going to be, I would move to, I was going to make a motion to postpone for 30 days, because I really do think that there are some questions, and I think some heavy thought needs to be thought out. I do understand one side possibly doesn't want to do that, and maybe both sides want to get this over with, but at the end of the day, I still think we got too many unanswered things that possibly could hurt both sides, and everybody has a right to develop their property, but I think we're getting to the point of exhaustion on where we go with it, so I can tell you now, if it comes back to us, probably going to have a decision within that 30 days if we do postpone it. So, just want to make sure everybody's aware of that. So my motion is to postpone for 30 days.
Okay, I'm gonna, I want to make sure that we're clear on this. If we vote to deny or postpone or to approve, this is just a recommendation that this commission is making to the parish council. The parish council has the ultimate authority, like somebody asked about, you know, how do we change this zoning? The parish council has the authority on this, we're making a recommendation on this matter. So it's, I don't want to give the impression that we have more authority than we do, we're making a recommendation. We have a motion to postpone. I'm gonna just, I cannot make a motion as the chair, but I am going to say that the motion, or the quandary we have in front of us is, do we want to keep the higher density in place, or do we want to drop down to a lower density? I understand that people may not be happy with that, but lower density is better than higher density. They don't, they don't need, all they have to do is go pull a permit right now to put apartments on that, that, they don't have to come before us. So they're coming before us to move it to a lower density. You know, my thought process is to handle a lot of the problems that were brought up and concerns are done in the planning stage, and so maybe some compromise, Mr. Morone, maybe some compromise could be had in the planning stage of the development versus approving the zoning one way or another. Commissioner Martino.
I'll make a second on the postponement for one month.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to postpone. Having that, that takes priority over an approval or denial. Any further discussion on postponing this matter? Commissioner Narcisse?
No, it's just-
Okay. Please vote.
Sorry.
This is only to vote on the postponement.
Postponement carries.
Okay. Okay, motion to postpone carries. Postpone for 30 days, for one month.
Commissioner Gaines, can I make a comment?
Commissioner Robert. Robert.
I just wanted to state, I voted nay for postponement, because I, I don't think dragging this out is doing us any favors, and these folks have shown up in force. This is the third meeting. Had the motion to postpone not taken precedence, I would have likely made a motion to deny, so that the councilwoman could have heard this case and made the decision to appeal on the appeal, which would have inevitably come. That being said-
Only the commissioner who proposed the postponement may rescind or ask for reconsideration.
And yeah, I'm not asking that at all. I just wanted to state what I was going to say right before, but I know that the folks here do, did ask for postponement as well, which is why I withheld my comment, so.
Okay. Okay, having no further comments, I apologize, folks, but this is going to be heard again next month. Mr. Morone, do you want to have an additional community meeting to hear comments from the community? Look, I'm just trying to facilitate some dialogue back and forth, you know, to try to come to a compromise.
We have had some discussions with Mr. Laird and with some of the other residents outside of the community meeting setting, so I think we, I mean, to me, I think we have the ability to continue those without having another community meeting formally, but certainly if a community meeting is set, I will, you know, I'll participate as best I can.
Mr. Laird, would you come forward, please? Ms. Core, would you come forward, please? Are you comfortable with communicating with Mr. Morone outside of the community meeting, or would you like a community meeting called?
Oh, yes, we're comfortable with speaking with him outside of it.
Ma'am?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so ordered. Thank you all very much for attending tonight.
Thank you.
If this case is over, so y'all, I'll give you all a minute to leave if you wish.
Mr. Chair, if he's not back, I'll be-
Okay. Hey, guys, just clear the room, please, let's not dawdle in here and talk.
Hey, Aaron, Aaron.
Can you come sit in?
We're going to move on to item number three on the agenda, please.
Item number 2025-4306-ZC, existing zone L2, large lot residential district and HC2 highway commercial district. Proposed zoning L2, large lot residential, and MHO manufactured housing overlay. Location, parcel located on the north side of Rose Street, east side of Camp Bilory Road, being 35393 Rose Street, Slidell. S32, T8S, R14E, Ward 9, District 11. 0.37 acres, petitioner is Kiwanah Thornton, owner is Tamprop Incorporated, Jamie Lindsay IV, Council District 11.
Staff.
Per the most recent aerial imagery, the site is currently developed with an existing manufactured home, which is considered a legal nonconforming use. Per the petitioner's application, the manufactured home is being removed from the property. The purpose of the requested manufactured housing overlay is to provide areas where manufactured homes may be placed on individual lots as permitted uses. It is intended to provide various areas and settings for a quality living environment for manufactured home residents. As of now, four manufactured homes on, there are four manufactured homes on Rose Street, and they hold legal nonconforming status. If approved, the applicant may apply for a building permit to either replace or install a new manufactured home on the property.
Okay. Sir, what's your name?
My name is Jamie Lindsay, and I'll be brief, I'm for it.
Okay. All right, anyone else in the audience wish to speak in favor? Anyone opposed? Wish to speak in favor or opposed?
Well, I'm for it.
Okay, thank you. What was your name?
My name is Kiwanah Thornton.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Having no opposition in the audience, I'll bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Robert.
I'd like to move to approve. Ms. Kiwanah, I saw this, I hope you do something nice with that lot, that's a pretty, pretty lot, looked like it had some junk on it before. You look like a lady who takes care of herself, I can't wait to see what you do with it.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve. Commissioner Robert, I have a question for staff, is this inside or outside the resiliency overlay?
Give me just one second.
Yes.
Commissioner Gaines, I would like to point out, manufactured housing should not be affected by the resilience overlay.
How so?
Because the resilience overlay mainly applies to bringing in fill dirt, and when you anchor a manufactured home, it's slightly different.
It still affects the base flood elevation, I believe.
It does, it does.
Yeah, so the resilience overlay requires it to be three feet above base flood elevation, right?
Correct.
That's why I was just-
Yeah.
I want to make sure you know what you're getting into. There's no, there's no home on the property right now, correct?
Yeah, there is.
You removed it. Okay, perfect. I just want to make sure, because like, that would, additional flood requirements and everything, elevation, and that would, that would definitely play into your building requirements. Okay, so we have a motion to approve. I need a second. Commissioner Daughtry.
I'm not going to make a motion to approve. I had a discussion with the councilman in the area, he's concerned about the size of the lot. He says it's too small, and 37, three tenths of an acre, that doesn't sound like it's too small to me, but that was his opinion, and being the councilman in the area, whatever we decide, he can, you know, override it one way or the other. So I'm going to go ahead and handle the second on this, so that it will go on to the council, and he can have a discussion with you. Have you had a discussion with?
Yes, sir.
Well, you need to have another one.
Okay, absolutely. So we have a motion and a second?
Yes.
Any further discussion?
One more thing. I'm already lost. My only question was that if it had to be elevated, was there any win things, but if it's not in resilience, we were good.
No, so that was the requirement.
Yeah, we're good.
All right. No further discussion, please vote.
Motion to approve carries.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is item number four.
Item number 254311 CP use pole sign, existing zoning HC2 highway commercial district. Location, parcel located on the southeast corner of Gauze Boulevard, West and Thomas Road, Slidell, Ward 9, District 11. .5337 acres, Kevin Crays is the petitioner, owner is Cyark LL, probably LLC, Council District 11.
Staff.
As you all probably know, that with the implementation of the new Unified Development Code in December of 2024, we brought back the conditional use process that is applicable to specific uses. One of those uses is pole signs. So the applicant is requesting to replace an existing 120 square foot pole sign with a proposed 116 square foot pole sign on a property that is developed with a gas station. It's on the corner of Highway 190 and Thompson Road. The Planning and Zoning Commission has authority to grant waivers or variances to minimum standards, so this request is requesting three waivers, and I can just run through those real quick. A pole sign is not allowed within or near 500 feet from the edge of the property line of a residentially zoned district or a single-family residential zone structure. The purpose of this regulation is to minimize the visual disruption that a pole sign can cause, but this subject property abuts the Tammany Trace before it gets to the residential structure, the residential neighborhood in the rear. So staff has determined that the visual obstruction of the trees along the trace kind of negate that issue. The second variance or waiver requested is a minimum clearance between the bottom of the sign to the highest adjacent grade shall be 10 feet. This is standard language when you're looking at pole signs in relation to setbacks and site triangles and cars being visually obstructed when they're trying to turn. This is not an issue, because the location of the pole sign is set five feet from the property line, and the property line is roughly 15 to 20 feet from the right-of-way. The third one is, the cumulative pole sign area should not exceed 75 square foot for a single occupancy business. The sign exceeds the maximum allowable signage by 41 square feet, however, the existing pole sign is currently on the property, exceeds a maximum 75 square foot sign by 45 square feet. So this proposed pole sign would be in greater compliance with the newly established pole sign requirements of the UDC.
Could you say that last one again for me?
Well, you-
Yeah, please.
Okay. The, a single occupancy pole sign, so for one business, is allowed 75 square feet. They have a sign on site right now that is 120 square feet, it's a pole sign. They're trying to replace it with a smaller sign, so if we allow the smaller sign, it would be in greater conformance with the Unified Development Code than what is there today.
Correct. But still not in conformance, correct?
Correct. It would be in greater conformance.
Okay.
They're increasing conformance.
No problem, thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Kevin Crays, I'm the owner of the property. Obviously, I've been in favor of it.
Sure.
I don't have anything else to say, I was told I'll be here to answer questions.
No problem. So I'll ask the first question. So why do you, why are you replacing the sign?
I apologize, I didn't know till today that I had to come.
No problem.
I brought a picture to show you. It's a very old, very poor condition. I bought the site two and a half years ago, and kind of been going through this the whole time, accomplished this. It's just very, it doesn't look good, and our intention is to improve it, make it look better. We feel we've done that with the rest of the site, we want to do here, but the way it's been told to me is I cannot change a thing on it. So we have not touched it, because I need to have something that is bad over not having anything at all.
Right. Okay, thank you very much. Anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor? Anyone opposed? I don't believe I have any cards for this particular item. I'll bring it back to the commission, Commissioner Arsaman.
Yeah, I'm very familiar with that building, with that property, with the sign and everything. I think this is going to be a much improved look to it, and I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve, so I appreciate you wanting to do what you're doing.
Okay, motion to approve, Commissioner Arsaman, Commissioner Robert.
I would like to second Commissioner Arsaman's motion, please get rid of that pit stop sign, it's ugly as sin, it looks like something out of the movie Cars that my son watched on repeat when he was three, can't wait to see the new marathon sign.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Daughtry.
There's, looking at some pictures, and every time there's standing water in the ditch, and I think it's on your property, I can't really tell, but it appears to be on your property, and you need to get the parish or the state or somebody out there to clean that ditch out, so that it does not hold water. Okay?
All right. Thank you. We have a motion and a second, seeing no further discussion, please vote. This is with the waivers.
Motion to approve carries.
Moving on to item number five.
Item number 5, 20254318ZC, existing zoning R1 rural residential district and RO rural overlay. Proposed zoning R1 rural residential district, RO rural overlay, and MHO manufactured housing overlay. Location, parcel is located on the end of F Jenkins Road, south of Sherwood Forest, being 81443 F Jenkins Road, Bush, Ward 5, District 6. Acres 10.12 acres, petitioner Linda Jenkins Smith, owner Linda Jenkins Smith, Council District 6.
Staff.
The subject property is currently developed with a single-family residence. As you can see in the vicinity map and in the staff report, it abuts property that was rezoned to the manufactured housing overlay in 2017, and it's roughly 100 feet from a large swath of property, which was rezoned to manufactured housing overlay in 2010, the comprehensive rezoning. If approved, the applicant can apply to place a manufactured home on the property.
Okay, sir.
Yes, this is my mother-in-law, Linda Smith. We just trying to put a modular home on there for my family, we already have a small farm out there, and we just trying to move out there, that way we're not traveling, because my son shows cows, and, you know, they're all out there, so we're just trying to get out there.
Absolutely. I would want to get out there, too.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak in favor? Anyone opposed? Bring it back to the commission, Commissioner Martino.
Yeah, just, I know some of these folks, hard-working individuals, to the property size, I think it's more than adequate, more so by large amounts than some of the others we see. No issues, I make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Commissioner Martino, Commissioner Arsaman.
Second, please.
We have a motion and a second, seeing no further discussion, please vote. Thank you.
Motion to approve carries.
Moving to item number six.
Item number 6, 20254321L2 large lot residential, proposed zoning L2 large lot residential and MHO manufactured housing overlay. Location, parcel located on the south side of Oak Street, west Lakeview Drive, east of Beach Drive, being 38188 Oak Street, Slidell, Ward 9, District 12. acreage .0253 acres, petitioner Vanderbilt Mortgage and Finance LLC Evan Berry. Owners Vanderbilt Mortgage and Finance LLC Michael Shelton, Council District 12.
Staff.
This is a request to allow for manufactured housing overlay on this particular property. There's currently an existing mobile home on the property, so the applicant may apply for an electrical connection to have power turned on to the manufactured home, or also request to replace the mobile home with a new manufactured home if the zoning change is approved.
Okay, is the petitioner in the audience today? Okay, Evan Berry or Michael Shelton, not here? Anyone wish to speak in favor? Anyone opposed? Anyone opposed? Please come forward. Have you filled out a speaker card, ma'am?
I sure did. Penny Schuler.
Oh, here we go. Penny Schuler, go ahead, ma'am.
Yes, sir. I came before this committee two years ago. We talked about the subdivision. At the time, we had a different council person, but at that time, they said there'd be no more mobile homes, manufactured houses in the subdivision. This one was completely destroyed and it was supposed to be removed. The bank's been working on it. It's still not up to par. It doesn't even have a floor. You can walk under it and see into it. But back then, we got in touch with FEMA. Mr. Jerry Bender was in charge. We both him and I both spoke with FEMA. They said this subdivision, due to the location of it and everything that happened during Katrina, which was our anniversary twenty years ago, all the mobile homes back there were destroyed. Every single one of the houses, the stick built houses remained, all but one that a mobile home actually not floated knocked off its foundation. That mobile home beat two or three houses, knocked bricks off of houses. I mean, it floated, but it's the wind factor two back there. They said the wind on a mobile home, they're not built with the same specs that a stick built house has. We've had new houses in the subdivision in the last two years. When we left here two years ago, we didn't think we'd ever be back to fight this again, but here we are.
Here you are. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, I wanted to say the same thing, basically. This thing's up high on cinder blocks. If you look at it, you'd swear it's going to collapse on its own. And you have to see it. I'm being honest. But the one that floated that was there before the storm, it damaged my house also. It floated all, I have a two-story house back there. It floated and knocked my, I have an upstairs porch. It knocked it all up. Mobile homes shouldn't be even allowed back there. They float like boats when there's a storm. It's unbelievable.
All right, thank you.
I thank you.
Jamie Lindsay.
He's calling.
Okay, Bill Cloud.
I live back in that neighborhood. The, the council meeting a couple of years ago where it was discussed that the houses or the structures to be built back there from now on would be on permanent foundations that will withstand eight or ten feet of water like we had during Katrina. This is, this is my main objection to this overlay. Now, if this overlay is approved, will the other people who have bought lots back there to put mobile homes on, will they be able to apply for this same overlay? Okay, we're not rural. We're in, we're part of Slidell. We're actually, well, we have city on two sides of us and then there's ground on the other, on the other two sides, the interstate's on one side and, and, and the boat works on the back. There are no mobile homes allowed in these areas. We're one little small subdivision of about eight streets that there is already a builder who has built probably a three hundred thousand dollar house back there. He owns, he owns four more lots and he said he was going to build another one. There's another house that was built a year and a half ago. If the overlay is allowed, that's going to stop builders from coming into our, to this neighborhood and improving it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak against? We'll bring it back to the commission, Commissioner Arsomont.
Yeah, I voted deny.
Okay, we have a motion to deny. Commissioner Robert.
I agree with Commissioner Arsomont. I just looked at the assessment. It looks like Vanderbilt is in Tennessee. They didn't bother to send anybody here and the amount of residents who've shown up against this, I would second Commissioner Arsomont's motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Okay, so the motion is to deny, so voting yes will be in the affirmative to deny the motion. Seeing no further discussion, please vote.
Motion to deny, Carries.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you very much.
You may not hear the end of this, so come back again, okay?
Right, they have the right to appeal.
Yeah, so look, just, just, just be, my fellow commissioner brings up a good point. They have a right to appeal this to the council, so just be aware, look at the council agenda. Thank you very much.
Item number seven, twenty-two-five forty-three twenty-four ZC existing zoning R one rural residential district and R O rural overlay. Proposed zoning R two rural residential district and R O rural overlay. Location parcel located on the northwest corner of LA ten seventy-seven and P Morgan Road Folsom Ward two District three, four point nine five acres. Petitioner The Kinschen Group Steve Williams, owner, Security National Partners Limited Partnership, Robin Arkley and Council District three.
Steph.
Mr. Chairman, as you noticed on the staff report as well as the two next staff report, Mr. Russ Kinschen is here to represent the three cases. This is in the same vicinity, which is Highway ten seventy-seven and P Morgan Road. So if possible, maybe we could.
We're going to hear them separate.
You want to hear them separately? Okay, we will hear them separately. Well, this is the first case here, which is on a corner of P Morgan Road and Highway ten seventy-seven and the first request is to rezone a four point ninety-five acre parcel from R one to R two. And I believe that Mr. Kinschen here give, can gives, Kinschen can give us more details in regards to the request.
Okay, sir.
Good afternoon, Ross Kinschen. So I'm here on behalf of my client to request the rezone for this parcel who fronts on Highway ten seventy-seven. The goal is to keep the same large lots that are in this area. The goal would be to divide this property to make two, two and a half acre lots. They'd have over two hundred feet of frontage each. We will hear two other cases later on, but this one right here on the highway, the, the northern end of the parish obviously is zone R one to keep the large rural feeling up there. And I believe that smart growth is very good and controlled growth is good. So being that you have the R one zoning in a majority of the parish, it allows people to come forth and propose what they would like to do on their land and you can make a decision on if it would be good for the area or not. So this type of, if you want to call it development, is cohesive to what I feel people want for rural areas. It's larger lots. It's not a subdivision. It's on a main highway, so there are roadside ditches in place. So we believe that this goes in line with a, the, the area around it. On P Morgan Road, which this property sits on the corner of ten seventy-seven and P Morgan Road, there's already about six lots that are two acres or under. So we're not going to be dramatically changing or creating a lot that would not go with the current landscape around the area. So if you have any questions, you know, I'll be here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can we clarify something maybe? I was under the impression that you were trying to create a three acre parcel out of this and add the rest to, because the R two allows you to create three acres and not two and a half acres.
So, so you're saying, but it would still be two lots?
I looked at this and thought possibly you were trying to make this a conforming lot because it's under the five acre minimum for the R one designation. But now I'm hearing that you're, you're not. Your intention is to subdivide this further into two, two acre lots, which the R two, R two specification is three acres, correct?
That's correct, yeah.
You're, you're not.
That was a misunderstanding.
Yeah, you need to, you want to, you want to take this off the table here and redo this?
Correct. The other two that I have are in compliance. This is the only one that has a question.
We're just hearing this one though. So you, you want to make a motion to postpone this?
If y'all, yes, sir. I don't want to be the one to make the motion, but if y'all would.
You have to, so.
So I can make the motion?
Yeah, you could, you could take this.
Let's request to take this and take it off the agenda for tonight.
Ms. Wanda Blanchard, can you raise? So look, I, we're, you're going to give you a chance to hear you, but he is going to, he's requesting to postpone this, so if you go ahead and, go ahead and have a seat for me. So if you want to come forward and just give us your, so here, here's what's going on. He's requested to postpone this, so the only thing we're going to vote on up here is to postpone or not. But since you made, came here tonight, I want to give you the opportunity to speak on this.
Thank you. I think he needs to do more than postpone it. We bought the property right next door. We live at one oh four one nine. We have nine acres.
Please just address us, don't look at.
We have nine acres and I wish eleven years ago, actually fourteen, sorry, someone would have told us what happens out there. One person told us and we didn't believe them because it's beautiful out there. I have pictures that I would love y'all to look at. I have four sets and I would love him to take some and take them to the people who plans on buying this land to see what we go through every time it rains, every time a storm comes. We flood in the yard. We flooded twice in two thousand sixteen. In two thousand twenty, we flooded. We had to pay eighty-eight thousand dollars to raise our house because when we built our house in two thousand eleven, we were told we only needed to be four feet. Water rose well above four feet. So I can tell you, until somebody does something for us, they should not build on that property. If you look at those pictures and see how high that water gets. And I make sure, nobody told me when we built, I will make sure those people know how bad it floods there. And my other thing is too, we're not allowed to bring dirt in, so tell me what they're going to do. How are they going to raise these houses? We were never allowed to bring dirt in. We never did.
We're going to address that as well.
Yes, so how, how do y'all like those pictures to see what we go through every time? And I know you see my cute grandson on the first one.
Thank you very much.
And let me tell you, if anybody wants to see anymore, I have a lot more on my phone.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else, we're only speak, we're only talking about this one issue on right now. I only have one speaker card. I do have speaker cards for the other, other items, so we're going to get to those. That's why I'm hearing them separately. Does anyone wish to speak on this particular item, twenty-two-five forty-three twenty-four dash ZC? Okay, I'll bring it back to, sir, you have an opportunity for rebuttal. Now, now you've, you've asked to postpone it, but if you want to rebut the comments, you can.
I just want to say sorry for the confusion on the first one. We're good to postpone if.
Okay, thank you. Do you wish to say anything else or can we move on? Okay, thank you. Bring it back to the commission and Commissioner Robert.
I'd like to make a motion to postpone.
For?
One month.
But motion to postpone for one month. Commissioner Martino.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, please vote. Have you spoken to the, the commission, the parish councilman about these developments?
I did reach out there. I haven't got a response yet.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Motion to postpone for one month, Carries.
Okay, we'll hear the next item on the agenda, number eight.
Twenty-two-five forty-three twenty-five ZC existing zoning R one rural residential district, R O rural overlay and MHO manufactured housing overlay. Proposed zoning L one large lot residential district, R O rural overlay and MHO manufactured housing overlay. Location parcel located on the northeast corner of LA highways ten seventy-seven, P Morgan Road Folsom Ward two District three acreage fifteen point four acres. Petitioner The Kinschen Group Steve Williams, owner, Security National Partners Limited Partnership, Robin Arkley and Council District three.
Steph.
The request here is to rezone from R one rural residential district to L one large lot residential district and Mr. Kinschen is here to give us more details.
Okay, sir.
Thanks for having me again. So this property here is on the same road. It also fronts on Highway ten seventy-seven as well and P Morgan. We are asking to rezone this to allow the smaller lots. However, I do want to point out that the, the maximum number of lots that this rezone would allow is not the intent of the property. Each of these lots on this road would have two hundred plus frontage and there would be no more than the eight lots. I know that y'all need to hear the worst case scenario, but that is not the intention, the fifteen lots. That is not the intention whatsoever on this property. The client is aware of the, the elevation requirements, which goes through, you know, obviously we have to meet all of the FEMA guidelines with the base flood determination and more than likely the homes will have to be on piers. So we are aware of the, the situation as far as the elevations and my client is requesting to rezone this from R one to L one.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak in favor? Okay, Joshua Petrie. So just unlike some of the other cases you heard tonight, you, you only have a combined five minutes for everybody, so I have three or two other speakers, just be cognizant of the time.
I'll be quick, just like the previous lady.
Thank you.
I live backs. I've been a resident on this road a little over almost seventeen years now and lived through several floods like she claimed. Twenty sixteen, I had, I had close to four and a half feet of water on that property, but came within a wit, an inch of my subfloor. So yes, I, I thought this actually was a joke when I heard that they wanted to make these big lot sizes even smaller to put more on here. If anything, I would, I would think we would do the opposite. These, these lots are right sandwich in between the ten sets, Highway ten seventy-seven pretty much makes a levee around P Morgan Road, holding in all the water from Savannah Branch runoff and the Chafunkta River. So we flood twice. And, and as it is now, the drainage on the road, water stays in these ditches year round because there is no drainage. That's a problem that still hasn't been addressed since I've been living there. So that, that's my main concern. We definitely don't need to consider smaller lot sizes than what we have. I'm on this side of this property and these are all eight acres and it's two seven acre lots, which he's, he's trying to make smaller, so I'm sure I'll yield my time to.
Thank you.
I would just like to reiterate everything that that man has just said. We've lived there. I own, well, my father and I, between the two of us own fifty-seven acres in that area and it originally flooded in, in, in nineteen eighty-three. And then the, they, they cleaned out Savannah Branch for a long time and it worked real well, the drainage, which was much better. Over the years, it's built up. Then in, I think it was two thousand fourteen, they came in and raised Highway ten seventy-seven, raised it about eight. When we built that house in nineteen seventy-seven, we, we shot a grade and built the house eighteen inches above the road. When they raised the road in two thousand fourteen, in two thousand sixteen, we had six inches of water in the house and it's never done that before. And then it happened again in, in two thousand sixteen in August, both March and August. And it's just, plus it's, it's a density thing too. I mean, the, these, it's not as bad as the first case you had, but, and it's all rural area and we don't need another basic subdivision in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Pamela Seltun?
Seltun.
Seltun, I almost got it.
Okay, I'm not used to speaking in front of adults. I'm a teacher.
It's okay.
I speak to littles.
Just pretend we're kids, we're good.
That was my father and yes, he said his, his dad, I bought what was my grandpa's weekend home. It's about four feet off the ground already raised. It's about four feet off the ground already raised. And yes, it's flooded three times, the worst obviously in 2016, when they basically created a dam, when they raised the road. Mr. Dotary mentioned that man needed to clean out his ditch. If you drive along 1077, there's water in it all the time, like the first man spoke of. Also, Beadaco Creek, I had to look it up in 2019 when all of Beadaco flooded. And I'm texting my best friend, who's, I was like, just built a house, and it was inches from getting in her house. Did you ever imagine that you should have built your house raised? And she said, no. But Beadaco Creek, it's in a mile radius of where this property is. You can look where it starts, I had to look it up myself. My husband and I moved over here to get away from an interstate wall in Metairie. My husband's a country boy at heart. He's, we thought, oh, we'll be teachers, and we'll live in the country, and won't have to look at an interstate wall. And for this to be proposed, 15 acres is right along my whole property, and I have horses. And so I just don't want to look at all the houses and keep it rural. And the two points are, I want my property to remain rural, and I want to not flood. And he mentions one, for this one, it's one, he's moving it to an L1, which is one house per acre. And he said that's not what he's going to do, but I don't know. I mean, you can do whatever you want after you move it to an L1. So I just hope that we remain rural, and the flooding is just terrible.
Thank you.
And one more thing, in 2021, the water was over my road at least a foot or two, four times. And actually, I could make it five times, because my dad said it never, once it rises, once the Savannah Branch raises, it never comes back up the next day, I mean lowers, it never comes back up the next day. It did. And we had stuff float away, because we were like, oh, okay. So thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Sir, you have a time for rebuttal now, you have three minutes.
Just wanted to point out two things. So directly across from this site, there are currently six lots that are two acres or less. So there, the lots are not going to be dramatically smaller than anything that's already. Of course, on the farther backside end of the road, the lots do get larger. However, where this property is located directly across, you can see the parcels are smaller. The road right before this, on Albert Thompson Road, there was a property that was rezoned to L1 previously. So this has been done in the past, very close to the location site. So those are the two points that I wanted to point out.
Thank you. Does anybody wish to speak in the rebuttal time? Yes, ma'am. Y'all?
I just want to say, we're not against people moving out there. It's a beautiful area, that's why we moved out there. What we are against is, you're going to put more houses, we flood. What are you going to do to stop the flooding? What are you going to tell those people when, like I said, I had to redo my house, I don't know how many times till I raised it, 10 feet. My house is raised 10 feet right now. What are you going to tell those people when you sell them this property? How much, about it flooding? What are y'all going to do for us to stop the flooding for us? Before you let these people come in and build more houses, that's going to make it even worse for us. And what those other people said, we're in like a bowl. That highway is so high, it's like a hill. And we're not allowed to bring in any dirt or do anything.
Thank you.
Yep.
You have a little bit more time, anybody else wish to speak?
How y'all doing? My name's John Olson. Who is my councilman in that area?
Martha Kasabat.
Is he here?
No, she.
Okay, sorry, I've never met her.
Yeah, this is not, this is not the parish council, we're the commission, planning commission, yeah.
Anyway, I moved out to P Morgan Road three years ago. I bought the property in 15, excuse me, I'm nervous, in 15. Best neighbors I could ever have. Small community. I bought eight acres out there. Matter of fact, Josh, two lots over, that's the other eight acres. There's an empty eight acres in between us that I think they're trying to divide. I moved out there to get away from the neighborhoods. I love it out there, I love the nature, I love the animals, I love my neighbors, I love everything about it. When I heard about this, it just really upset me. You know, I just hope that y'all consider that.
All right, thank you very much. Okay. All right, any further discussion? All right, I'll bring it back to the commission. So I'm the chairman, I'm the only resident that I know of in that area. So I'm going to make a few comments. I've spent my entire life driving past this property. Went to college southeast and drove past it every day. I watched them build spring lakes and thought, oh my God, those poor people. Because I know, I know how the flooding is. It's 77-foot elevation on there, and it comes down that whole territory a mile wide and three foot deep. And it's bordered by two dams, the 1077, and, you know, just creates a dam that keeps everything hedged in until it gets all the way down to 190, and that's the other dam. So while I appreciate that the desire to, you know, make as much gain out of a piece of property as possible, the density is in that area for a reason. And you stated, sir, that, and I'm not debating this with you, but you stated there were some other properties there that are two acres, but you're asking for one acre. So that's already a higher density than what's currently visible. And in this, since this property itself is highly flood-prone, I don't see any reason to grant creating more density in that area. So with that comment, I'll bring it to the other commission, Commissioner Martino.
Yes, to that, one thing I heard, and we've heard this in other meetings, is, well, they can just build on pylons, and their house won't flood. I work with a lot of first responders, so I like to remind folks that although their home may not physically flood, in the very high likelihood, during that rain event that may last two or three days, if there's an emergency, there's no access in or out. So I wish there were more folks in the room that hear that, yeah, you can build high. So just a suggestion, you know, down the road, I'd make a motion to deny.
Okay, a motion to deny, Commissioner Martino, Commissioner Robert.
To tag on to what Commissioner Martino said, I'm a floodplain manager in my full-time role, and I have a family that I'm working with right now, north of this, off of Delon Road. I did call Jennifer Landry, our current sitting floodplain manager for the parish, prior to this meeting, because the note stated that the BFE was pending determination from the Corps of Engineers, which is standard in unnumbered A zones, and it has not come back yet. I found out why, I think a lot of people are waiting on BFEs from the Corps. However, the family that I am currently working with, north of this, has got a BFE back about a month ago from the Corps, 77 feet, and their property natural ground is at 70. Tagging on to what Commissioner Martino said, you know, he has experience with disaster response, and how flooding doesn't necessarily, it doesn't pick and choose if your home's on slab one grade or raised. My concern is that when we start chopping down trees and putting more concrete on these parcels that are taking up, I'm sorry, absorbing a ridiculous amount of floodwater from two very major waterways in this parish, the Tofunkta River, which is to the left, and Savannah Branch, which is to the east. This property's not just a bowl, it is a funnel. The rivers are shaped like this on either side, and everything in between is a massive bowl. All of the water from both of those watersheds pours across these properties. Again, you know, the ask on the first case from five acres to three acres is not egregious, in my opinion. This is egregious, I cannot get behind L1 on this, I'm very sorry. I would like to second Commissioner Martino.
Okay, we have a second to deny. Seeing no further discussion, please remember that a motion in the affirmative, or the vote in the affirmative, is to deny this proposal.
Motion to deny, Carries.
Here, number nine on the agenda now.
2025-4326ZC, existing zoning R1 Rural Residential District, RO Rural Overlay and MHO Manufactured Housing Overlay. Proposed zoning R2 Residential District, RO Rural Overlay and MHO Manufactured Housing Overlay. Location parcel located on the east side of P Morgan Road, north of Highway 1077, Folsom, Ward 2, District 3, 8.12 acres, petitioners The Kitchin Group, Steve Williams, owner, Security National Partners Limited Partnership, Robin Arkley, the second, and Council District 3.
Staff?
The request here is to go from R1 Rural Residential District to R2. Rural Residential District being that it is 8.12 acres. It would allow for the creation of two parcels over three acres.
Sir?
Thanks for having me again. I appreciate all the feedback from the last request. So this, this lot's a little different, in my opinion, whereas the, the proposed zone would only allow for a maximum of two lots. I understand the concern on the elevations and the flooding. I believe that in this case, there would each be over four acres each. That's a substantial amount of property. The concerns that I hear is that if, even if anybody moves on this road, it's just disaster. And I understand that, and I think that that's something that potentially the public works or the parish council can look into on why does this keep happening? And I understand the rivers being there, I mean, we live in a parish that is surrounded by water, which is a blessing and a curse. I'm a surveyor, so I understand how these elevations work, and it is, it's a very, it can get very tricky. I believe this request is more reasonable, and what my client would want for this is to be able to have two large lots available. And each lot that would be created would have over 200 feet of frontage. So once again, I'm here requesting the rezon on this parcel that's currently large lot residential, and it will remain large lot residential, but just a little bit smaller lot. So I appreciate the time that y'all have given me tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak in favor? Okay, Robert Newberry?
Good evening.
Yes, sir.
I got to say, I'm probably the one that's the oldest and been there the longest. I've been on there since 2005. I got my prop, you know, I got my permit to build on a Friday, Katrina came Monday. So I got to see what it was all about. And the man that lived next door to me, Mr. Benny Folks, he actually, and this is where the part where you see there's several lots.
Uh-uh, sir, sir, just address us.
Where he said there were several properties, two acres. I'm the only one, 2.68 acres. Mr. Benny has the other part of that five acres. His house burnt down one year after Ida. And it still remains the same. Nobody has done anything to that property or anything else. I've been trying to get, buy that piece of property, get that piece of property. I heard it went on a sheriff sale. I tried to go on that site to bid on it and everything else. But, anyway, that, it just floods. I mean, I have been up there, there's only two houses that didn't get water in 16. Mine and my neighbor down the road, Mikey. And we were the only two that didn't have damage. Everybody else, Mr. Benny had over 54 inches of water in his house. And then five months later, he ended up with another 36. So like I said, if you want to build, build high.
Yeah. All right, thank you very much. I don't have any other cards for this particular issue. Yes, sir.
I'll speak again, I'm right in between these two.
Come on up.
I know.
Well, I just wanted to add that my property, this property we're speaking of now, on this side of P Morgan Road, all of these lots are seven acres or more, there are no two-acre lots. We are the closest to Savannah Branch. Just like the 15 acres we talked about earlier, that water really funnels through here when it floods. If I wouldn't have gotten up for work at 5:00 AM to go to work that morning in 2016, my family would have been stuck in there. That's how fast the water came up. When I attempted to go back, the water was all the way to the top of 1077. And we were rescuing Mr. Benny, they had a boat in there to get the old man out the house. They brought me to my home to get my boat. The current was so strong that from the highway, trying to even get back to my house with a 25-horsepower motor, I can barely drive against the current that was trying to get out of the bridge, which is literally less than a football field from these properties. So I just wanted to reiterate that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience? Sure. Come on, we're just trying to wrap this up, okay?
Okay. I know that piece of property that he's talking about. It has a ravine that runs right through the middle of it. My property, everybody behind me, or down from me and everything else, all the water runs across their property. I got a ravine in my property, and all the water comes through and goes to my pond. And from there, it goes out. Mr. Benny, when Ida came through and everything else, he passed away the day Ida came through.
Yeah.
And it was three days before they came and picked his body up, because they said, oh, y'all are flooded. No, I was going up into Covington, to the police department, everybody, to come get that man. We were packing his body with ice, because nobody would go down there and pick him up, because they said our road was flooded. And it wasn't.
I understand.
You know, two days later, it was gone.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Hey, read the room on this one, man.
So like he said, the property next door between me and Josh is literally an X. I have a ditch running across my backyard through the middle of that property. And another one, like Robert said, runs east and west through it. I mean, it's basically four different pieces right now, you know? But yeah, in 2016, I did own the property, I had a camper on it, it flooded, destroyed it. So three years ago, I decided to put it on pylons, I'm 10-foot in the air. I feel pretty safe now. But, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Bring it back to the commission, so I'm going to make a comment again. The, you know, it's a, you do have to build on pylons in this area, right? Very familiar, several houses that are on pylons there. And, but, on eight acres, you probably just need one, you know, one home. So that would be my comment. Commissioner Robert?
Okay. The idea of three-acre properties here sounds terrifying. However, when we look at it, it is eight-point, this one in particular, it's 8.12 acres. Frontage would be over 200 feet for each one. You could not split that anymore. The only reason that I am not tearing this one apart is because it will be just shy of five acres. By, it will be over three. This one is a compromise to me. It's four acres per lot, you still get 200 feet of frontage, over 200. I don't hate this one, I don't love it either, so this would be my compromise. I would make a motion to approve on this one for that reason alone, because it is, cannot be split further into three-acre parcels.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Robert. Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, I either need a second, or somebody, Commissioner Martino?
Yeah, I do disagree. Mainly location, surrounding homes 20 years ago, y'all are very resilient. You obviously love your neighbors, you must love the location outside of those couple of times that you flood. I'd make a motion to deny.
Okay, motion to deny. Commissioner Arson, on?
Second to denial.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to deny. Any further discussion? Please vote. Yes, sir.
Motion to deny carries.
Alright, thank you very much for coming in today, I appreciate it. Now, just to make you aware, so two things I want to make you aware of. He does have the opportunity to go to the council and appeal this. Also, if you contact, the councilwoman for this area is Martha Kazaban, she reached out to me, and she's considering the resilience overlay for this area. What that is, it's a special overlay that we've developed for specific areas that flood. Currently, there's an overlay between, I think it's south of I-12 from LaCombe to Slidell, and there are another one they're putting in on south of I-12, from like LaCombe to Mandeville. So, this would be an area they would consider that. It would increase the level above base flood elevation to three feet that the home would have to be built. So, it has to be built higher than would normally be allowed. So, might want to reach out to her and support that, if that's, if that's what you're trying to do, okay? Staff, we, thank y'all very much. Staff, we have some special dates in the coming months for the meetings, correct?
November.
November is going to be, when are the meetings going to be?
So, in November, you have the Monday, November 10th, where you have the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay.
And then, on the Wednesday, you have the Planning and Zoning Commission. Or if you would like to use the older terms, yeah.
Same week, okay.
So, the Monday is the zoning commission, and the Wednesday is a planning commission.
Okay, perfect, so that's going to be in November, it's going to be in the same week.
Yes, because you have Veterans Day on Tuesday, so you will have the meeting on Monday, and then the meeting on Wednesday during the same week.
Alright, mark your calendars.
I move we adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Meeting adjourned, thank you.